... the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Okay, I need a motion to approve the agenda.
I make a motion that we actually amend the agenda under recognitions and presentations to add the Teacher of the Year.
I'll second.
All right, with a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
No opposed or anything like that, so that one passes.
So I now move that we approve the agenda as amended.
I'll second.
Oh, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
I don't think we have to do it like that. I think we should have said...
Sorry.
All right, so now we're on to recognitions and presentations.
All right, so the first, trying to try to get these things organized. So we've had a funky last two months, and so we've had to kind of move some of our recognitions around to make sure that, one, they're not conflicting with some of the weather-related issues, but also, two, not kind, we're trying to counterbalance some things. So during February, we, so we had National School Counseling Week, so that was February 3rd through the 7th, and so we really wanted to highlight our school counselors. Unfortunately, I don't, and I'm looking around, I always try to pan who's here, I don't think any of them were able to make it. I know it's a busy week, we have a lot of literacy nights, we have a lot of things going on, and they like to be a part of that and helping out, but I do still want to go through and be able to acknowledge who they are. The first person is Ricky Perry, and she works at Nelson Middle School, and we just want to say thank you much, very much for your, your service to our students. School counseling is a very complicated, busy role, and you wear a lot of hats, and we just want to say thank you very much. Next up is Zach Wingate, he serves as a counselor at Nelson County High School. Summer White is in that kind of transition position of the eighth grade middle school counselor, as well as the ninth grade counselor at the high school, so serves both schools in a really unique position. Shemaine Daye is our lead counselor, our director of counseling for all of them, and she is a counselor at the high school. And we have Maren Tettelbach. Maren Tettelbach serves as the counselor at Rockfish River Elementary School. And last but not least is Ashley Aaronson, she is our newest addition to our counseling unit. I'm just still looking around, make sure someone's not sneaking in on me, to make sure, so I don't miss acknowledging them. Ashley's new to us, and she's serving at Thai River Elementary School. So we just want to say thank you very much. You know, we talk a lot about the needs of our students and our staff, and these are really integral individuals who work to support our students, but they also serve and work to support our staff as well. So we just want to say thank you very much and congratulations, and I will say, please, join me in giving them a round of applause. All right, so next up is one of our favorite things, they're all our favorite things, and we get to recognize people by our One Nelson Awards. So the first individual that I always like to recognize is our student. So Hoyt, will you please join me up here? I think we're gonna go on this side, because it makes it easier for the lady to take the picture, and also maybe easier for your mom. So Hoyt, you were nominated, and I'll read out loud what the nomination is for, so bear with me, okay? Hoyt serves on the Thai River Elementary School Safety Patrol. He does great with others and working with buses each morning. He is a hard worker, respectful, has great attendance, and is a caring person. Hoyt, is it front? Oh, you're right ahead. We'll get to that. Hoyt is an exceptional student who strives for success, and this is coming from his teacher. So he strives for success and is helpful to his peers. He works well with others, he's kind, and adds extra fun to our learning environment, this is what he was snickering at. He earned the nickname Toaster during our electricity unit. Probably all would like to hear more about that. So between the two of us, we really, we usually joke about what's for lunch, because he always has the better meal. He's smart, fun, and kind, and is a great model for the One Nelson Award. Go Hoyt. So congratulations. Look at this nice lady right there, and then we're gonna make sure that mom gets a picture as well. And don't forget, your mug. You get a mug, I don't know if you know this, we've got a little mug for you. And I keep it in bubble wrap, because I will drop it and break it, but it has One Nelson on it, so it's gonna kind of match that a little bit. Congratulations. Mom might end up with the mug, you never know, maybe you'll put your hot chocolate in there, so, all right. Next up is our community member, and we have someone standing in to be able to accept this, Sheriff Embry, will you please join me?
Yes, ma'am, of course.
All right. All right, so for our community One Nelson Award winner, we wanted to recognize the FABR Fire Department as our community recipient. The fire FABR, that's a mouthful. Fire, the FABR, yeah, you're gonna read ahead of me, god, that makes me nervous. The FABR Fire Department has been instrumental in helping the NCPS Transportation Department by allowing us to use their parking lot to train and test our new employees who require their CDL. Recently, we had to repaint the lines and make some adjustments, and Chief Cook came to the station, assisted us with the lines by providing painters, tape, and 90-degree angle measuring stick to ensure that we met all of their requirements. During a flooding event during a previous month, Chief Cook also was able to assist by providing roadway updates. So we want to say thank you so much for the assistance, obviously helping us train our drivers, and also navigating the flooded roadways, it's super helpful for us, keeping everybody safe, but also getting us to school. So we want to say thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Appreciate it, and thank you for joining us.
Absolutely, yes, ma'am, absolutely. Thank you very much. No, it's fine. Thank you very much, appreciate it, thank you.
Wait, your mug.
Make sure the chief gets this tonight, yes, absolutely. Thank you all very much.
Can I get a mug shot?
Everybody's groaning, I'm really... reading ahead of me and outthinking all the jokes, that's good stuff. Right. Next up.
Happy anniversary.
Huh?
Happy anniversary.
All right, so our next up is our support staff, or our classified staff. So will Ms. Melissa Mars, please join me up here. Yes, we all have this. I'm assuming you're gonna read ahead too, so I'll try to...
I'm not, I'm not even allowed.
All right, you're gonna listen. Exactly. Bask in the glow of the One Nelson. Melissa's job as accounting assistant is critical to the overall success of the division. She is responsible for all of the payrolls and tax and benefit reporting for this school district. She has to plan vacations, appointments, and sometimes sicknesses around the deadlines imposed by her job responsibilities. The IRS does not care if we don't feel good, or she doesn't feel good, or if we have snow, or if we are having vacation, as its deadlines are non-negotiable. Melissa also does all of the filing of our federal grant reimbursements, requests, and ensures that we are meeting all grant mandates and requirements. And so, thank you on behalf of all of us getting a paycheck, we really do appreciate that. And, yes, exactly, and a lot of that job is like making sure those little details, and checking the right boxes, and making sure everything's filled out correctly, because one little off-task thing can take out too much, not take out enough, and then that could rip, well, it's tax time, so we all know, we're gonna find out real quick if that works out real well. So we want to say thank you very much, congratulations. Does your daughter want a picture? No? Okay. Thank you, all right. All right, and unfortunately, our next recipient is not able to make it, and the reason why is she's working one of our literacy nights. So I want to, if you bear with me, I want to be able to recognize Susan Cargill as our certified staff division, for those of you who don't know, her husband is sitting in back behind that wall, running all of the technology here, so he's proudly watching through the monitor. Susan serves as an instructional coach for both Rockfish River and Thai River Elementary. She is a dedicated employee who serves students, teachers, and administrators with literacy support. In addition to providing coaching cycles, she attends PLC meetings, attends and provides professional development, and tracks data for data-informed decision-making. Susan is always willing to go the extra mile and collaborates with coworkers in a positive manner. Susan's pleasant demeanor and forward-thinking mindset is an asset for our Nelson community. So we want to say congratulations to Susan Cargill. I will find where she is tomorrow, and I will go back and read this in front of others, so she has that chance to experience the same thing everyone else is, and we'll be able to make sure we recognize her, and she gets her mug, so congratulations to Susan.
Okay, now...
Nope, nope, nope.
Oh, yeah, that's what I forgot.
So, like I said, we kind of get derailed sometimes with the weather, so earlier, I think it was January, was it? Not in January, we were able to go to the individual schools and recognize not only our individual school Teachers of the Year, but the entire division Teachers of the Year. So I want to be able to go through, and what I'm gonna do is, for the consistency sake, I'm gonna read some of the information that was submitted on behalf of those teachers, particularly by their principals, because that's always really, really meaningful, but it's also a collection of feedback and feelings about those individuals from all who nominated them, so it's a collection of things. And I think that that's something that really needs to be emphasized, is these awards are peer-nominated. So a lot of times, that's far more meaningful than like someone in a separate building just said, "I'm gonna, I'm gonna name this person." So this is clearly a very well-earned and respected award. So first, we're gonna start, I'm gonna call up Ms. Leslie Roberson up, please. So you get to stand in front of everybody. No, we have, yes. We're not, we're not shortchanging anybody, we did go out to the schools and kind of really did a big fanfare at the schools, but we do have other things waiting to bring to you, but just, don't worry. So bear with me as I read this, and do we all have our phones ready? You good? We're good, okay, all right, I don't want to, okay. So it is a great, great pleasure that I, meaning Mr. Walker, write this letter in support of Leslie Roberson's application for NCPS Teacher of the Year. Once you meet Leslie, the first thing you will notice is her infectious enthusiasm and smile. She brings the same energy and enthusiasm to each of her classes daily. Leslie started her teaching career at Stonewall Jackson High School, that's Shenandoah, correct? Yep, in Shenandoah in 2018. As I was interviewing Leslie for her current position here at Nelson County High School, she noted that she is able to make connections with students that traditionally struggle with or hate English class. As a young student, never, that never happens. As a young student in the ninth grade, Leslie's English 9th teacher noticed that she was struggling as a student. Her teacher made it a priority to help Leslie find her way. Once Leslie found success, Mr. Holton, her English 9th teacher, encouraged her to help struggling peers in her class and established a creative writing club after school. Mr. Holton encouraged Leslie to pursue a career in education after graduating. The guidance from Mr. Holton helped provide Leslie the foundation needed to help her in her own teaching philosophy as an educator. The early success that Leslie found as a struggling student, she's able to support students that traditionally don't like English and not always finding success. Those students have found books and magazines that have, that have often helped these students stay excited about reading and finding success. Her students have shown several letter, levels of reading growth in her classes. With her students showing success in ninth grade, this has helped those students be successful in 10th, 11th, and 12th grade. With her teaching strategies and support, those students have shown greater success on the English 11th and reading and writing assessments. Finally, Leslie has been a great English 9th and 10th grade teacher at Nelson County High School. The students love her, as, so when we walked in and announced this, it was the first day she had her second semester students, so they're just learning, and so to sit in a class and the first kind of impression that you're getting of your teacher as being honored as the high school Teacher of the Year, that's a pretty cool way to start. And they, when we walked her back in, they all gave her a standing ovation, so that was, that kind of shows you that, you know, the reputation proceeded, but also was reinforced. So her, her students love her, her lessons are fun and engaging for all of her students, and she plays music at a low level to keep her students on task while working independently. Last year, students in her classes encouraged her to start back up the debate team at NCHS. It had been 20 years since the high school had a team compete. Ms. Roberson wants all of her students to be successful in the classroom and with their future plans. She supports her students in their athletics and activities by attending several games and events throughout the school year. Just this provides all of us with the information needed to understand why Leslie Roberson won Teacher of the Year for the high school. So congratulations, like I said. Congratulations. Yes, so, and we, like I said, you've got your stuff, we have something coming to you, so don't worry about it. Yes, thank you so much, congratulations. All right, good time. All right, do we have, yes, Ms. Hess is back there, I almost tried to finish that, Hess to stop myself.
I won't read ahead, because I can't see without my glasses.
Oh, well, hey, I guess, and I'm not the fastest reader out there, so. All right, so this, like we said, this letter is provided to us by your principal. So it is "With pride and enthusiasm that I recommend Ms. Lynn Hess for the Nelson County Public School Teacher of the Year and as the winner of the Nelson County, Nelson Middle School. Ms. Hess exemplifies excellence and education through her ability to inspire, engage, and empower her students and colleagues. Her impressive career spans more than three decades, and her dedication to student success, professional growth, and community service sets her apart as an exceptional leader. Ms. Hess currently serves as the 7th grade English Language Arts teacher at Nelson Middle School, where she combines her knowledge of research-based teaching practices with a genuine passion for learning. Her innovative approaches to instruction such as integrating hands-on learning activities and data-driven differentiation have led to measurable growth in her students' performance. She maintains high expectations for all learners, creating a nurturing yet challenging environment that allows each student to thrive. In addition to her classroom work, Ms. Hess is an accomplished professional with a long history of leadership and contributions to the field of education. Her role as lead innovator for NCPS demonstrates her commitment to advancing educational practices across the division. Her expertise extends beyond the K-12 setting, and she also serves as an adjunct professor at Liberty University and Central Virginia Community College, where she has developed and taught courses such as composition and rhetoric, and methods and materials in teaching of English. Her experience in higher education not only enriches her pedagogy, but also inspires her students to pursue excellence beyond the middle school classrooms. Ms. Hess's influence reaches far beyond her classroom. As a content author of Send Gage and McMillan Publishing, she has helped to develop textbooks used in college-level writing courses, directly impacting the quality of education for students nationwide. She has also presented at conferences such as the Sider Conference for Higher Education Pedagogy at Virginia Tech, sharing her insights on effective teaching strategies with educators from across the country. Her commitment to service and community engagement further underscores her well-rounded excellence. As a Virginia literacy volunteer and Special Olympics supporter, Ms. Hess models the importance of giving back to the community. She also serves as a mentor for Liberty University's adjunct instructor team, demonstrating her dedication to fostering professional growth among her peers. The accolades Ms. Hess has received throughout her career speak volumes about her impact and reputation. She has been named the NMS Staff Member of the Month, and also has earned Liberty University's Chancellor Award for Teaching Excellence, and this recognition is a testament for her unwavering commitment to the teaching profession. In every role that she's undertaken, Ms. Hess has embodied the qualities of an outstanding educator. Her passion, innovation, and unwavering belief in the potential of every learner. Her contributions to Nelson Middle School and beyond make her truly deserving candidate for this award. So we want to say congratulations for being named One Nelson. Congratulations. One more rotation, but you're walking out. Congratulations, thank you. All right, so Ms. Al, or Dr. Allison Simmons, please join me. All right, so Dr. Simmons is a teacher at Rockfish River Elementary School. She's a dedicated special education teacher at Rockfish River, and she has been for 14 years. She works tirelessly, tirelessly to empower her students with the tools they need to succeed academically and socially. Dr. Simmons fosters meaningful relationships with her students through love, patience, and understanding while inspiring them to strive for their best in helping them achieve. Her teaching approach involves fun, interactive, and educational activities to reinforce SOL concepts while making learning accessible and enjoyable. She constantly seeks new strategies to improve her practice and enhance student achievement. Dr. Simmons is a valued Nelson County Public School community member and is exemplifying dedication in and out of the classroom. As a lead innovator for the school division, she plays a vital role in driving innovation and supporting her colleagues. She makes time for all students and staff, offering assistance and mentorship with enthusiasm and care while guiding fellow teachers through challenges and celebrating their successes. Beyond her professional duties, Dr. Simmons is a passionate volunteer, supporting after-school events, tutoring students, and engaging in community activities. Whether organizing morale-boosting events for faculty or enriching classroom experiences, her selfless contributions reflect her unwavering commitment to the values of NCPS. Dr. Simmons's dedication and willingness to take on additional responsibilities set her apart as an invaluable school community member. Her attempt, her determination to excel in every aspect of her career, her unwavering positivity, and her ability to inspire students and colleagues make Dr. Simmons the perfect candidate and winner for the Rockfish River Elementary School Teacher of the Year. So congratulations. All right, yes, oh, did you, did you get one?
No.
All right, now, not last but not least, we're gonna call Taylor Ramsey. You knew this was coming. All right, so this is Taylor Ramsey, and not only is Taylor the winner of the Thai River Elementary School Teacher of the Year, she was also the winner for the Nelson County Public School Teacher of the Year, and was, had her application submitted for region and state consideration. So, as I read this, so it is with great enthusiasm that we write this letter in support, so this was a part of the package to be able to nominate her and send her forward for region and state. She won the prestigious Teacher of the Year, again, not only for Thai River, but the division. This is written on behalf of her principal, she's had the privilege of working closely with Ms. Ramsey, who currently teaches 2nd grade. Her unwavering dedication, innovative teaching methods, and genuine care for her students make an exemplary candidate for this honor. Mrs. Ramsey has consistently demonstrated an extraordinary ability to engage students, foster a love of learning, and create a nurturing classroom environment. Her commitment to academic excellence and her passion for education are evident in her students' exceptional growth and achievements. This has included such engaging lessons as making butter in the classroom, incubating and hatching chicks in the classroom, not making butter for the chicks, okay, yep. So taste test, oh gosh, oh, taste test with the peeps, not the ones that had in there, the marshmallows, distinction there. And also creating food trucks for students to practice spending money. Each lesson has been directly connected to the Virginia standards of learning, and follow-up activities were included to incorporate math, science, and reading standards. One of Mrs. Ramsey's greatest strengths is her ability to meet each student at their level, tailoring instruction to suit their individual academic and behavioral needs. She employs a variety of creative strategies, including hands-on learning, technology integration, and differentiated instruction to ensure all students have the opportunity to succeed. As a teacher licensed in both general education and special education, her knowledge, skillset, and experiences have assisted her and her ability to meet each student where they are daily. Beyond the classroom, Mrs. Ramsey is a leader within the school community. She has served as a cooperating teacher, was an active member in her squad work last year, and is now an active squad leader. She participates and is active in planning for after-school community activities and collaborates with colleagues to enhance curriculum and instruction. Her positive attitude and willingness to support others, inspire those around her, and contribute to a culture of collaboration and continuous improvement at Thai River Elementary. Lastly, Mrs. Ramsey is deeply committed to her students' social and emotional well-being. She is above and beyond to build strong relationships with her students and their families, creating a sense of trust and partnership. She has worked hard collaborating with behavioral support staff and special education staff to assist in meeting the needs of her students and communicating with families. Her compassion and dedication ensure that every child in her care feels valued, supported, and safe. Mrs. Ramsey truly embodies the qualities of an outstanding teacher and is an asset not only to our school, but Nelson County as well. She is an exceptional educator who's made a profound impact on her students, colleagues, and the Thai River Elementary community. You cannot think of anyone more deserving of this recognition, and they're excited to name Ms. Ramsey not only Thai River Elementary School, but also the Nelson County Public School Division Teacher of the Year. So congratulations, just a little back note, when we went to Thai River to announce her for the district, able to kind of coordinate a little bit, like an assembly if you will.
Y'all were good.
So, yes, and she, none the wiser, she thought you were, would you think you were having a meeting or a meeting?
I had a meeting, yes, squad leader meeting at 8:00.
She was like the same, she was like, "I have stuff to do, I don't even do this." And I'm like, "Oh, it's gonna get better." So when we got in there, the kids went crazy, the staff went crazy, they were all super excited, and it's kind of everything you'd want, to have someone be able to experience it as they are, and that, so that was a lot of fun. Right now, well, oh, he was able to hear and kind of say, so we're gonna, you know, make this one, and then we'll get to the whole.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, now we can go to the comments from board members. Mr. Chief?
Yes, well, congratulations to all of the Teachers of the Year and all the One Nelson Award winners. Always pretty amazing stuff. Again, I'm always thankful that when Dr. Hester came on board, she came up with the idea for the One Nelson Awards, and I think it's a fantastic example of how we work well as a community, and as we go forward in time, more and more people are more and more involved, and, and that's, that's a really good thing. Also, great job finishing the year basketball team at the high school, fantastic job, we were all kind of following along with that, and they made a, made a pretty good run on that, so congratulations to all of them.
Thank you very much. Mr. Parker?
To echo what Mr. Chief just said, I was able to participate in the boys', what was it, regional finals or quarterfinals? Game finals, and down in Roanoke, they fought hard, and some things out of their control happened during the game to predict the outcome, but... And, and thanks to all the staff members and central office staff for their hard work, and that's all I got.
All right, thank you so much.
So we love the One Nelson Awards, congratulations to everybody that was recognized, that's, that's such a good honor. People take time out of their day to recognize you, write something down, and it says a whole lot about you. So congratulations to everybody. Congratulations to the Teachers of the Year, I mean, that's your peers, that's your peers looking at you and saying that, and so we watched you all up there, we were like, they're so humble, like this is, you truly do this from the bottom of your heart and for the good of the students, and so it is really a huge honor, and we appreciate as a system everything that you do every day, because no one person, no one staff member, teacher goes in to do just the job they've been hired to do. You all go above and beyond every single day, and so thank you for that, thank you from the schools, congratulations, not only for the school honor to you, Taylor. day, because no one person, no one staff member, teacher goes in to do just the job they've been hired to do. You all go above and beyond every single day, and so, thank you for that, thank you from the schools. Congratulations, not only for the school honor to you, Taylor, for your county-wide honor, congratulations for that. You all represent us really, really well, and we respect and appreciate you more than you probably know. The other thing, Caesar and I were able to go to that game together, and we're the best fans, plain, straight up and simple. When you saw some details later on, we are fans, love our teams, and our teams certainly deserve it, so congratulations for that. I think we had some really good indoor track things going on, so congrats to those teammates. The play was phenomenal. So, you know what blew me away about the play is that there was, you know, it's sometimes hard to get young men to do play stuff, and the stage was full of lots of different kids, and they did an amazing job. That is a huge production, and the efforts of not just the kids but a lot of community members, again, a lot of teachers, a lot of staff, putting in extra time to make those things happen. So, well done, tell the kids really, really cool and well done. And I think that's, oh, for our middle school, our elementary and kids, a glow dance? Do we have a glow dance somewhere? Oh, those, nice, very well done. And it sounds like you all are getting a ton of really good participation in your dances. So thank you to everybody. Another busy month, we're kind of closing in towards the end of the year, believe it or not, in a few more months, a couple more months, so hang in there, we really appreciate all that everybody's doing.
Well, thank you so much. Now, I do not have anything else to say because they all said it all. Thank you, everybody, and I do get sometimes feedback about making you guys sit around like past this point, but I really feel like it's, since you're already here, what the heck, you should listen to the next part, which is comments from the superintendent, and she just rolls right through all of the things that you guys have done or we have done as a system in the last 30 days or month or whatever, and it's just amazing to me, you know, not working in the schools, no kids in the schools, just how much you guys do and how much it brings to the whole county as a whole. You know, this is a wealth of everything, so with that.
Well, can I defer to support our students here, because we were just on the heels of like how great they're doing, so I don't want to steal that fun out and pass that on to our two student representatives who have been doing a great job all year long. So you guys go ahead.
So, the boys' basketball team made it all the way to the state quarterfinals and where the runners up in the regional basketball tournament. This is the first time they've participated in the state tournament since 2008, so. For the boys' basketball, Dogwood District, Dogwood District Player of the Year was Colton Ward, Bryce Giles, first-team All-Dogwood District, Aiden Carter, second-team, Jack Warr, Colton Baker were both honorable mentions, and Taron Watson was the Dogwood District Coach of the Year. So you guys, best wishes. For all-region, Colton Ward and Bryce Giles were first-team All-Region 2C, and Aiden Carter was second-team All-Region 2C. For girls' basketball, Dogwood All-District Team Honorable Mention was Sophia Piedra and Hannah Rivera, so congratulations. For our indoor track team, Dylan Butler, Garrett Carter, Brent Taber all went to states for a long jump. Dylan Butler and Sterling Williams made to states for the 55-meter dash. Bryce Giles went to state for a shot put and finished fourth in the state, and it was a PR for him in indoor track. Also, the four-by-two-hundred relay team made to state meet and PR'd and finished eighth in the state. And this team consisted of Sterling Williams, Dylan Butler, Matthew Shannon, and Colton Baker, so congratulations to them. For our spring sports, baseball, softball, and both boys and girls soccer had scrimmages this past Tuesday and start their season's games next week. As well as our outdoor track, 35 boys and seven girls are on the official roster, and our first meet is on March 22nd in Danville at the Dogwood P. Mine District Inventational. Something to look forward to.
For some of our clubs at the school, the Cosmetology is opening up a governor's salon from Tuesday, Wednesdays, and Thursdays, providing a variety of services that range from $10 to $30. FCCLA will go to compete in state conference the first weekend of April. FFA will have Ag Literacy Day March 20th, where FFA members will go to the elementary schools and read to them. They will have, April 11th, they will have Drive or Track to the School Day, and April 24th will be Food for America Day. Your book is currently selling, your books until the end of April for $75, and then some recent school, like two days that happened. As you said, the musical was just performed last week, and it was, I went and saw, and it was really good, they did really well. Reader Across America Week, we had high school students go to both the elementary schools and read Dr. Seuss and Pete the Cat books to the classes, and they also each gave all the students a book. We currently have a Gov's Give Back program going where students, athletes will go and to the elementary schools on Friday and also read to students and encourage them to read. And then SOL remediation is going on during GRIIT and also after-school to prepare students for the end-of-year SOLs.
All right, thank you so much. Do you want to add any dates that you want to mention too, like the spring break is April 1st through the 5th?
It will, spring break is actually the 14th through the 19th.
Or then.
What am I looking at? This thing on this date?
Yeah, it's my, we have some other date on there. Okay, I will correct that. So, I was like, I'm going to do first because I certainly don't like to steal their thunder, but, you know, a lot of times we don't plan out what they share, but then we'll see it later on, so when I'm able to, when I'm able to show some of the pictures for community engagement, some other things, we'll see many of those items that they've just... I'm sorry? Yes, so we do have some things coming up, just some of my comments. First and foremost, thank you to all of our community's support. I think we saw that in full form in not only newsies but also basketball, but we also start to see more and more people coming out to see all the different variety of activities and events that we have going on, and that's a testament to our students and the support that they want to have. So close to being, I'm going to have that. So, we have coming up of the third marking period, we have that coming up pretty quickly, and it feels like the third marking period went by very quickly due to a lot of the inclement weather. With that being said, something I'm sure people are eager to hear, as I explained in our last meeting, we started off the school year with 1,144 hours that were scheduled. We are still now well above the standard of 990 hours for the school year. So as of right now, barring any future weather, we are keeping our instructional calendar the same as we have right now, so we're not looking to add time to the day or add additional instructional days, because we're still well above. But as was shared, we encourage in our, in full force with our remediation, various remediation programs, whether it's GRIIT during the school day at the high school or after-school remediation, and also a lot of remediation takes place during the day at the middle school as well. But during the school day and after the school day for remediation, we encourage students to take advantage of that. I know our teachers are working really, really hard to support, so I just wanted to share that, I know some people are eager to find that out. And good luck to our spring sports activities. Yes, FCCLA is heading off to states, but also I believe we have Block &amp; Bridle coming up, I know it's been postponed from February, so that's coming up.
This weekend.
This weekend, so best of luck to everyone participating and in all of our students in the various activities. We still hold clubs, and we still, there may not be major competitions, but that's a way for our kids to find a sense of belonging and find things that they're good at and passionate about, and it makes them excited to stay connected and come to school, so we want to continue to promote that. All right, if we can just press slideshow on that bad boy, that would be great. Thank you so much. All right, so administration, obviously this is a big budget time, so a lot of time and effort is spent doing that, but it's not the only thing going on. We've also been working on the bid and financing for the high school renovation, reworking the budget when we find out some information about health insurance costs and some other items that we can see. We are in an interesting time period where we don't know everything going on at the federal level that could have some impacts on some things, but we continue to pay attention and to work through what we do know. We're also working through, you know, our everyday monthly things when it comes to, you know, following the remaining balances of our federal grants, working with maintenance to plan and strategize for dealing with just our everyday operations, looking at purchase orders and approving them, and monthly financial reports, and also federal reporting for the FY '24 federal grants. So a lot of things going on within the administrative department and also really strong budget emphasis on that. Again, in full force for instruction, various professional development opportunities, whether it's working with our secondary staff on English as second language strategies and being able to support our students, or working through professional development for CKLA, if you'll remember, new literacy materials, new standards, trying to make sure we're aligning it and supporting our staff to be able to do that. We also have finished up our vowels testing, so we're getting the screening system and understanding where our students are at. BRVGS testing is complete, so it's our next group of BRVGS testers coming into us, but also our seniors are preparing for their capstone presentations coming up at the end of the month, so we're pretty excited about that, it's kind of a full-circle opportunity there. Big month for early childhood, we had our kindergarten and our pre-K registration. I would simply say to anybody out there watching, if you have not registered your pre-K student or your kindergartner yet, there's still plenty of time to do that, and we encourage you to reach out to Ty River or Rockfish River Elementary School to be able to do that. We also continue with our, so we have some people who aren't able to make it this evening because of literacy nights at both our elementary schools that are taking place, and that's a great way for us to really promote and engage with our community and our students to promote literacy. And then also, we had individuals attend the National Institute for Excellence in Teaching, and that conference was in DC, a lot of great, rich information not only for education but leadership, so excited to have that brought back and implemented. Human resources, this is the hiring season, so lots of time and energy spent going out and recruiting, filling, posting positions and scheduling interviews. Recently attended the Liberty University Teacher Fair, also looking to work with local universities and colleges to place students and grooming our next generation of educators, so placing them for practicums, student teaching, and also submitted our hometown teacher program applications to compete for being able to support some of our Nelson students who then turned into Nelson employees to be able to support them here and celebrate that. In terms of pupil personnel in conjunction with kindergarten registration, we also do our developmental screenings for ages two to five. We've talked about this a lot with our budget, we're seeing more and more of our younger-aged students coming to us with more needs, and so that requires more supports, and we try to get ahead of that to know the students that are coming to us and what their needs are, so we can better plan for staffing, funding, and all of those items that are going to be so critical to their success. Also, special education helped us, we talked about this the last time, it's continuing, I love that, it gives everybody a chance to kind of learn a little bit more. Also, drafting and hoping to approve the annual plan for the '25-'26 school year. Special education advisory, one of those mandates, but it's a wonderful opportunity to bring families, students, staff in to really support all the goals and initiatives of our special education plan, and also continue to have division-wide department process of facilitating. Last school board meeting, we talked about parallel learning and bringing in a, kind of an interim school psychologist to do evaluations, that's their primary focus, and it is through a virtual platform, but that is something that we've gotten going already with it, so we're pretty happy to have that taking place. Terms of technology, here in central office, having the APCs or the connection racks to minimize and prevent any kind of interruptions and disruptions to the function and signals that we get. Chromebook updates, I appreciate the forward thinking on behalf of our technology department to be able to go ahead and order Chromebooks ahead of any kind of anticipated big push for other divisions and other entities to ask for these Chromebooks, and I think we're pretty lucky that we're going to get them in, I think tomorrow, whereas if anybody waited later, they may not be getting them for a very long time, just due to the big push and anticipation for maybe having some trouble getting them in. Fiber updates, working on the Terms and Solutions for NCHS, Zero Eyes Project, getting that implemented, and also, you know, you see a lot about this, but cybersecurity, and it's one of those things, we're all like, oh, two-factor authentication, oh, I got to do this, but in this day and age, the need to be very vigilant about cybersecurity, things like, they've been providing training of being able to look at an email and identify, like that's a little suspicious, I don't recognize that name, I don't recognize that email address, and sometimes you can open up the email, that's not as high risk as it is clicking on links or opening attachments, and so really training, like if you don't recognize it, then just delete it or send it on to Mike and his crew, and they can identify how legit it is. So that's really paying off for us, because we're surrounded by individuals that have been hit by some cybersecurity attacks, and it can be crippling, and we really are working hard to try to prevent or minimize any exposure to that, so thank you. Maintenance, last time we were here, we talked about the chiller, and we were able to address the challenges of installing that chiller and finally moved into the place after some setbacks. We received our RFPs and approvals for our high school renovation, so looking to move forward with that, and appreciate the support on behalf of the Board of Supervisors for assisting in that whole overall funding process. Maintenance has continued with our quarterly training goals, so we don't have just these big projects, we have our daily and our monthly goals, and also has been winterizing, so we talked about our spring sports and our spring activities, requires kind of de-winterizing our fields and our event spaces, so that has been the focus of this week, because we'll go into full swing next week. Transportation has been busy transporting, just recently, our boys' basketball, none of those games were scheduled anywhere remotely close to Nelson County High School, I think they kind of threw something on the map to figure out how far away we could get, so we appreciate everybody providing that transportation for our teams, and not just our boys' basketball team, but all of our teams, that's including, we had a escort to the county line by the Nelson County Sheriff's Office, so we appreciate that, and all of our drivers that are so willing to be a part of that process and driving our kids safely to and from the activities. Winter sports has come to an end, spring sports are starting, so that bottom left are all the scheduled activities that we're providing transportation for. You know, the ideal scheduling is having all of the teams going to the same spot, but sometimes you can't always make it like that, but there's a great deal of effort to make it work that way. And also a huge shout-out to the high school auto mechanics class teacher, Justin Durkey, they offered to take on the task of replacing the engine, and you see quite a few of those pictures, so a full engine swap and all these different, these photos that you see in a completed version, so that's a pretty big deal, and that's, you talk about work-based learning, you talk about life or employable skills, you know, you give our students an opportunity to swap out an engine, and particularly on a bus, that's a pretty big deal, and that's a pretty good preparation for life beyond high school. And food nutrition, school nutrition celebrated School Breakfast Week at all sites and introduced three breakfast items with the focus on whole grains for confetti pancake, strawberry cream cheese bagel, and a whole-grain chicken and cheese waffle, and so the theme was Get a Clue with school breakfast, and a lot of enjoyment out of that, and also the continuing education that takes place even within our school nutrition, attending child nutrition advisory meetings and also the Virginia Food and Virginia Kids Cohort Meetings. Last for February, student breakfast meals, 8,053 for the lunches, 13,135 for our after-school meals, 177, little bit of a dip simply because we had a little bit shorter month period with the weather and a shorter month, so. Last but not least, we talked about the community engagement, newsies, what a wonderful turnout, I mean, they've had to go now where you have to order your tickets in advance just to be able to make sure that you can get a seat, but also a twist, the cast and crew went to the elementary schools to be able to interact and work with the students to kind of get them engaged in that and make those connections, so what a great way to kind of build your program, but build that cohesiveness within the school division. Also, obviously, on the picture at the top of our boys' basketball team, winning the Dogwood District, champions, but also the escort on behalf of those supporting the team. The middle, we've been holding some community meetings and trying to get some feedback, how do we increase our community and family engagement, and really trying to listen to some of the ideas provided, and one of which was, you know, maybe kind of taking a different approach to parent conferences, and really, you know, sometimes that can be a scary thing for now. be a scary thing for the students, the teacher, and the parents, is really kind of renaming it and rekind of marketing and branding it as an NCPS Student Success Night. So really kind of looking at is how do we promote the success of our students and really kind of bringing that, you know, breaking down the barriers and building those relationships of getting our families in there to participate in this, taking the ownership on behalf of our students and really taking ownership in those meetings, so we really appreciate trying to work with our community on that. In the upper right for Black History Month at Ty River, they collected 550 cans and donated it to the Heritage Food Bank, so again, another really generous way of giving back to the local community. Marissa talked about the cosmetology initiative where they're, you know, working, they're, you know, they're in business, and they are working to kind of, within our community, to provide some services that maybe otherwise people wouldn't be able to get. The GUBs give back student athletes and other students going into our elementary schools to promote literacy by reading to them on a more consistent basis. They also doubled up and went on Read Across America, but it's a great connection tool for our high school kids to make those connections. Going to, you know, our Rockfish River graduates went back to Rockfish to read to those students in seats that they had sat in, and our Ty Rivers High School students went back to read at the school that they went to, so it's a great connection, and the teachers enjoy it, the students enjoy it, and it's a wonderful way to keep things going. And that is it. All right. Thank you very much.
Now we will have comments from the public, if there are any. Yes, ma'am. Or the public can leave, too, if they want to. Say yes. Here, I can go over it. I am, like, brain dead, so you're gonna have to...
I'm not.
I mean, tell me the way.
We're good?
Okay. All right. So, all right, awesome. I did want to mention, though, and Dr. Hester reminded me, that we should thank the Board of Supervisors for their recent action to finish our borrowing, whatever that step was, so they, you know, it's something along the lines of, the whole project is like $25 million to renovate the high school in many, many different ways, and, you know, most of that's not going to be all flashy stuff, it's going to be plugs in the rims, but, you know, I always say, like, in the 50s, you might have one thing to plug in, but now everybody has four things to plug in, so those things are not flashy, but they're very important to, you know, the ability of our teachers to teach and the ability of our kids to learn, so. Thank you so much, appreciate it. All right, so what's next? Consent agenda. Can I, and I will entertain a motion to approve, anyway, does anybody have any questions or anything about the consent agenda?
No.
Okay. I will accept a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Now we have items for information, the first one being the minutes of our February 20th school board meeting, and then we had another school board meeting and a budget work session on February 22nd, also the first reading of that, so just let Tammy know if you've got anything there, want to look it over, and we're back to Dr. Hester, or is that me?
That is you.
Okay. So March, among other kind of celebratory things that we had going on in March, it is also Equity in Education Month, and I'd like to read the proclamation. Whereas inequities in schools have become an increasingly significant challenge in the United States and Virginia, and whereas the majority of school-aged students are children of color and over 50% of public school students qualified for subsidized meals, and whereas we recognize that factors including, but not limited to, disability, race, ethnicity, and socioeconomic status have a demonstrated history of impacting the educational opportunities provided to a student, and whereas the promise of public education is for every child to be successful in school and life, and whereas it is important for Virginia families, students, teachers, and school administrators to be aware of the diverse needs of learners and to encourage discussion of the challenges as a school community, and whereas the VSB has established a task force on students and schools in challenging environments to make recommendations and to stay at the forefront of discussions on academic excellence in Virginia schools, and whereas we recognize that inequities in resources, including educational settings, supplies, technology, and buildings impede student learning, now therefore be it resolved that the Virginia School Boards Association recognizes the month of March 2025 as VSB Equity in Education Month, with the intention that educational equity, best practices, and programming be discussed in Virginia schools, communities, and classrooms during that time, and be it further resolved that Nelson County Public Schools and the Nelson County School Board recognize the month of March 2025 as Equity in Education Month to spread awareness, examine, discuss strategies, and review current trends and best practices that will positively impact the educational outcomes for all of NCPS students. Okay, awesome. That was awesome. Now we are going to go through some policy updates.
Do you have any questions?
I only saw the one. Am I wrong? Was there more than one? It's this big?
Yeah, I think a lot of them were just updating and clarity.
Okay. So this is the first reading?
This is the first reading. So, yeah, this is...
Really, yeah, rather than going into in-depth, this is just the first reading of it. Any questions or concerns that you may have, please by all means reach out, so then move into that second reading. You can discuss or answer any of those questions.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. And now we will have Mr. Les Campbell with updated information on Capitol Improvement Plan.
Okay. I guess I will start with the Mr. Chiller.
We're calling it Mr. Biggie.
Mr. Biggie. Because not only is it tall, it's long. So I had a few pictures for you tonight. If you look at the first picture, it's set on a concrete pad, so when I say it's long, Honeywell realized that they only had about two feet on the backside of the chiller to be able to access the service door, so they have to shift the chiller all the way to the front side of the pad, which they had to cut out a bunch of piping to make it fit. So they are actually ahead of schedule, believe it or not, installing it. They've got a good install crew. And so I say all this, last time we were talking about what, if it would cost us anything, I had a conversation with their account manager at Honeywell, Joyce Colburn, and she agreed that it was on Honeywell, that was there oversight, and that we will not suffer any financial...
Glad to hear that.
Yep. They did repair the ductwork and the door framing that they had to cut out, and I've supplied some pictures for you to look at, so you can, maybe, yep, you can see them. They've yet to have to paint the block, but they will match all of the paint to existing. The modernization of the high school elevator met with TK Elevator on the 26th, and they come out to give us a list of what we have to handle on our end as far as the new upgrades, of course, we're severely outdated with their equipment, so put some examples of what they're going to be looking at. We have to install a new disconnect with a battery power-down feature, so if you lost power, it will go down back to the first floor. So I will be working with Mosley to get that worked into the Phase II-A portion of the renovation, to get all of that done before we can get a, they have to have a third-party inspected after they install it, so in order for them to be able to inspect it and give us clearance, we have to have power on it, so I'll be working with them to get that up and going. Of course, like Mandy said, we're working to finalize that contract. I know that the contractors, as well as some of the subcontractors, are trying to get ahead of some of the potential increases in material and the, probably looking at the trouble of getting material, yeah, the scheduling, so we're working, trying to get that, so they can start ordering the material as quick as they can to get ahead of it. And I just, as of this afternoon, reached out to the service authority to work on the meter, we're going to go with the four-inch meter, water meter, and so we've reached out to them to kind of get locked in, so they can go and get, order that material, because that's a large lead time on some of that equipment, too, so I think we're going to be battling a lot of lead times and markup on material as we move forward with this.
Yeah, I don't think it's anything new for our projects.
Yeah, it's definitely going to be tough. Yeah, yeah, so. Any questions?
Where you go.
Okay. Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, I'm sorry to stay on topic.
Now we have Mrs. Rachel. Discussing the participation in our Region 5 cohort of the VCU-RRTC, which is the Virginia Commonwealth University Rehabilitation Research and Training Center. Rachel, wow. I'm going to change the, change up your introduction.
There we go.
Yeah, yeah, make it exciting.
So I wanted to come to you all today with an opportunity for us to grow our capacity in supporting, we have identified for a while is, you know, concerns with behaviors in the classrooms, and how do we support teachers, support students, and keep us focused on what matters most, which is instruction and safety. So this is an opportunity for us to build capacity, and I wanted to give you all a bit of background about how this came to be and why now it's an opportunity in Nelson. So to no surprise, back in 2008, superintendents and special education directors in Region 1, which is Richmond area, were noticing that they were experiencing some challenging behaviors with students with autism spectrum, among other disorders, and they realized that they wanted to pull together regionally and try to see if they couldn't solve the problem, try to keep students in their home schools. So then you fast forward to 2016, and the region partnered with the Virginia Commonwealth University, at the time their ACE program, which supported individuals who had autism, had very specific behavior-driven and data-driven protocols and procedures to help schools. So what they found through that success, the VDOE now supported VCU's expansion to go out to other regions in the state of Virginia to help these services for students with disabilities, of all disabilities from ages three to 14, which we know we are seeing incidents as young as three and four, and sometimes they're our most challenging behaviors, and also individuals who have autism through the age of 21, through a process called customized behavior application training. And so what their proposal, and what they've done and seen success with in Region 1, is coaching, consultation, and training for school staff. So I wanted to give a background on what that would look like. For coaching, they would work with our division liaison, which certainly I would be a part of, but also Laura Wolf, our behavior specialist, and our two behavior instructional assistants, to really target individually where their skill set is and what their individual needs are, and to provide them training in order to support our division students and personnel. And they would do that through regularly scheduled meetings and consultations. And so what they're doing is they're doing an individualized approach as opposed to just coming out and saying this strategy, hey, this works for all, you may have 10 years, you may have two years, we're going to give you the same thing. They figure that out through a variety of assessments and skill gathering. Another thing that they do, that I can already envision some classrooms where we need this support, is within two days, when you reach out and maybe schedule an initial meeting, if you have a classroom with a student who's maybe in crisis or particularly challenging, and everyone feels as if they've done everything that they can do, they, and they will come out and do three to five at least in-person visits and help support the staff in those classrooms. Their data indicates that they have a 90 to 97% success rate over their nine years of assisting school divisions and keeping these students, when they come out and help, in comprehensive public school settings, as opposed to placing them in our public separate school, Ivy Creek, or in our private days. Additionally, they provide training to all staff based on several different models, and of course, my vision, I really realized I need to go to the eye doctor, and I haven't gone in years, so I'm going to flip here. So there's different packages that they offer based on not only ranges of experience, but also, and those could be provided regionally, but also individualized, like micro models, because they know how busy teachers and instructional assistants and administrators are, they don't have time to sit for two hours watching a training. There's no time for that. So they offer very short incremental, like eight-minute types of mini-trainings that they can provide. So there's some social validity, this is just additional data, but I just want to highlight a couple of points that they brought out. They found that, this is from teachers surveyed in other divisions, but the high success rate in the teachers identifying the feasibility to implement in the classroom, as well as the turnaround time from, you know, when they were contacted and said they need help to when they come out and support, was rated very high. Additionally, 92.3% saw a reduction, a behavior reduction, and 86.3% noticed a decrease in challenging behaviors. That's really what our goal is, is really to make sure, how do we support our teachers? How do we support them quickly? And of course, you know, I asked them, when they, in my initial discussions with VCU, I pointed out Richmond's not that close to Nelson. Are you sure you have the means and the capability to drive out to Nelson? And they say, yes, we drive all over the state all the time, we're happy to do so. So all of this is really at, well, first off, it's, the benefits we have are consistency in consultations and trainings, providing that additional resource to our school division, and what I really believe in, too, is that building capacity for teachers and school staff. It's more than just, not just throwing people into a situation, but let's build the people that we have, and let's equip them and make them feel empowered in order to support the students in their classroom, most importantly, increasing student success in the school. So, and I was, like, very surprised when I heard how minimal this was. Annually, the cost of this is $3,750 for all of these services and the cost share with Region 5. It is not impacted, as Shannon and I learned through conversations with their fiscal team, it's not impacted if a school division joins or says, no thanks, we're not doing it anymore, because in the, they reached out to all the Region 5 special education directors, and a larger school division in Region 5 decided not to do it or is still deciding, and I thought when they pulled out that there'd be no way we could afford it, but our price remained the same. I will say, we've had VIA come out and support individual student needs before, and we did, we looked at some of the bills that we've received from VIA for those consultative services, and that price is really less than we've paid VIA in a month. So it's a really good price.
There's not a cap on that price?
No.
In the sense that only so many people can participate from a training, only so many students could flow, there's no cap?
No, they didn't say a cap. They based that price off of our student population, so for that cost share, it's just how many students we have is how they calculate the price. So who they serve, again, is students with autism spectrum disorder, ages three to 21, and then also students with disabilities of all ages, three to 14, and really, not all the time, but a great majority of the time, the individuals who are requiring the most support with behavior are those who are identified under a disability category.
And I would say, just even as recently as last night, having conversations with a staff advisor, you know, these are the things that we hear that are the biggest challenges, and it's some of these, you know, we had behaviors, you know, since you have kids, they're kids, but the increase in the number of students with these behaviors and severity is, we're starting to see that, and it is something that, you have people working so hard, we want to be able to work to support our students, and really understanding how to do that and how to get that, and it's difficult, so I think having services, challenges like this is going to be critical. think having services, challenges like this is going to be critical to being able to serve the students and also support the teachers.
Any questions?
How did you find it?
So they actually, we have Region Five Special Education Directors meetings on a monthly basis. So they reached out to our leads through Region Five and did a presentation and spoke to us. And so far, it's ourselves and Rockbridge County who have jumped on this, of everyone in Region Five.
Seems like a no-brainer.
Do our current proposed budget numbers already reflect this or not?
Yes.
They do, okay.
You still are up. I'm not even going to introduce you again. I can.
All right, I'm ready for it.
Now it is the annual plan.
Which is very exciting.
It is unrivaled.
Yes, you got it. All right, so now I'm going to speak to all the special education annual plan. Okay, there we go. So the annual plan is basically an agreement that we have with the state on how we are going to use the federal dollars that are given to us on a yearly basis to implement the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, or IDEA. So it's our ability to establish why we are eligible for funding and how we're going to use those funds appropriately based on guidelines. So the steps, and Mika was there with me the other night, we present this plan to the Special Education Advisory Committee, and then we present to the school board for approval. If you all approve the annual plan, our superintendent signs off on it, and then I submit it to the state, and those funds are released in the summer of 2025. So you can see there are many different components of the annual plan application, and I'll be going into each of those briefly with you all so that, you know, just so you're aware of what each component entails. So one of the first components is, and it was actually new last year, the General Education Provisions Act. So what this says is it acknowledges that we are going to, we are going to assure that we take away as many barriers as we possibly can in order to meet the needs of individuals with disabilities and their parents in accessing our services as a public education setting. And also, we're required to think about how we're engaging our community stakeholders. Teacher recruitment and staff training is a big piece of this as well, making sure that we get our teachers properly trained and those who are certified to be the ones to be providing their services to students. Another component is the regional jails and the implementation of the previous year's plan. We don't have any regional jails, so luckily I just did no and move on. For the regional plan, something that I do want to highlight is, or for the annual plan, there are a multitude of NCPS staff members' salaries and benefits, at least partially tied or funded through the use of federal funding through this annual plan. And you can see that they're listed there. It includes eight special education teaching positions, our behavior specialist, our two behavior support instructional assistants, one of our special education administrative assistants, my position, last year's plan also provided for funding, instructional materials and supplies. These funds also help to support our vision and hearing services that we have contracted, both through PREP and allied services to, because it's a very low incidence, it's hard to find a vision teacher and a hearing teacher. So these funds help to support those. And also, at a greater need, interpretation services during meetings, both with languages, with sign language, with interpreting documents, making sure that our families are aware as possible before they give consent to any plan we proposed. The other piece, another piece that we have to discuss is maintenance of effort. And maintenance of effort means that we are charged to spend at least as much, if not more, with local and state funds as we were the previous year. And so, as you can see, for the last school year, we had, we spent, I'm going to have to get closer because that's too small, that's too tight. If this isn't a sign for me to go to the doctors, I don't know whether it is. All right, so we spent $4,470,245.03 last for fiscal year 2024. Doing some calculations for this next year, for fiscal year 2025, we're projecting spending $4,771,461.95. So we're hoping to maintain that effort of how we're supporting our individuals with disabilities. Additionally, we have, and we don't qualify for this thankfully, but the state does monitor disproportionality, and if we over-identify a certain gender, race, ethnicity disproportionately, either with eligibility or disability, then we or discipline, then they do mandate that we set aside 15% of these state funds that they give to us in order to do some intervening and intervention services. At this time, NCPS is not required to set aside those funds. Speaking of setting aside, there's also proportionate set aside that is gathered from the December one count, and this really takes account of how many students we have that we're serving, who are either parentally placed in a private school or homeschool. And the state does a calculation and shares with us exactly how many students we need to set aside money for to fund in the proportionate set aside manner. As you can see, we are required to allot $382.50 to Section 619, which is our younger early childhood population, and then $28,306.87 to our school age special education population who are served separately.
That's for a year?
Mm-hmm.
What happens if that's a set aside in case?
What happens if you didn't spend it? Do you have to get it back?
If we don't use it, spend it, there are exceptions, and we can select one of those exceptions, and it can roll over into our other annual plan funds, and we can allocate them to our students and needs, such as materials or whatever we identify as a need. The annual plan also requires us to calculate and set aside how we're going to be supporting our individuals with disabilities, ages three to 21, and then ages in 611, and then 619. So you can see the listing there of the salaries we use. We're proposing to also really not make any changes, continue with instructional supplies, materials, both to support evaluations for eligibility as well as training. And then for 619, which is our younger kiddos, we also are talking about resources and supplies, mileage, field trips, extended school year services, and then evaluation tools to help determine their needs and abilities. So here you'll see we have a breakdown of funds per object code. The majority of what we're using in 611 and 619, as was highlighted, is our personnel and employee services. We also have kept some purchase services for our hearing and vision interpreting, as well as materials and supplies. There's a much smaller allocation of funding for 619, which is our three through five, and so you can see how it's broken down very similarly to last year. So looking at our application, we get this calculation from the state based on our December one child count numbers. And so this application, including PSA, or the proportionate set aside that we take out of the funds, we are overall, in our total overall annual plan application, looking for funding for $488,675 for our total annual plan application. And that I have to highlight is in addition to state and local funds. So just a reminder, it's, this application is federal flow-through funding to support students with IDEA, local and state funding also required in order to meet the needs of students with disabilities. And we spoke about maintenance of effort and that need to spend at least as much, if not more, than we did the previous year. Annual plan, any questions?
Yeah. Thank you.
Look at all the comments, like the community survey that was put out, the teacher survey that was put out, the student survey. We look at that information and we thoroughly go through it and determine if we can meet that need and that criteria with the parameters that the state gives us and what our expectations are for instruction.
No, it's very clear to me how much time and how very, you know, how hard you work on this. I really, I appreciate that. And I was actually, you know, very proud of myself to be able to kind of like take all of this information and kind of explain it to somebody. So that was good, too. Yeah, I've seen it many times.
I mean, I think it's a good point that if there's a way for families to make those student, no student days. That's a fair point.
Okay. All right. Any other questions?
No, ma'am.
Can you redo it all, Kim?
Yeah.
I can redo it all if you need me to. I have on, one thing that did come to mind that I wanted to mention is that when we sent out the draft calendar input survey, one thing that we brought up was a question about a transition night, that we normally have transition nights at our schools. We wanted to kind of build that into the calendar. It was a thought. And after collecting that information, it does seem that our staff would like to move forward with that at some point in time. But we do have some things to work out. So we thought we'd get a committee together and kind of work on that throughout this year to make a solid plan for the upcoming school year after 25, '26. So we do have that in the works. So it's something potentially for the following calendar that we'll present. But this would be for the current school year. We didn't decide at this moment in time to use that.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Now, the highlight of the evening, updated in.
It was a perfect time.
I know. Did someone text you?
She said, "No, I'm watching it."
Oh. So now we're going to hear from Mrs. Ms. Shannon Ervin about the budget. Hi!
The budget that I showed you tonight looks a bit different from the one you saw a month ago, well, on the 20th. The health insurance renewal came in from the local choice at 12%. So I went through and reworked the budget. It was originally 15% of the budget, so we moved it down to 12. We also incorporated the general assembly's recommended revenue figures, where before we were using primarily the governor's revenue figures. He has, I guess, another, the 13th, two weeks, yeah, to decide whether he's going to veto or approve the budget. There's general consensus that it was a bipartisan effort, and so the thought is, is that it's likely to pass as it was presented. So fingers crossed. It did result in additional funds for us. Now, the federal government, they still haven't settled last year's budget. So I think they have until Friday to decide whether they're going to do something or the government.
When's the last time they actually did a budget on time?
There was an actual budget?
I can't even remember.
Decades.
Right. So if they don't do something Friday, I think the federal government could shut down. But what that means, we'll see. Who knows what's going to happen next year? I did put some information in your packet about the CEP program, which is, which allows all of our students to have free breakfasts and free lunches. The House, in their budget bill, has a recommendation that the threshold for CEP participation be moved to 60%. None of our schools reached that 60% plateau. We're in the 50 to 59 range for each of our schools, which means that we would not qualify. So I wanted to prepare you for the fact that we may be going back to the old free and reduced and paid lunches. So that would be passing expenses back to our community. I went back to 2019, which was the last year that we had a really good year before CEP, and we received $583,000 in federal revenue. And last year, we received 956 because of the CEP program. So an additional $373,000 that we will have to either pass on or absorb somehow.
And the CEP, if I'm not mistaken, it was either created or adjusted during COVID?
Yes.
Right? And so they're really, what they're doing is trying to sunset that, I guess?
Yes.
Okay.
So the total budget request changed for another reason, and it's basically my nervousness over the federal budget. So many of the federal grants cover more than one year. Like, they might be for this year, but they might be also for next year and part of the next year because we're on a different fiscal year than the federal government. So this budget would ask for the appropriation of all of our federal funds that have been awarded to us in this fiscal year coming up, just because I don't know what's going to happen. And if there's a chance that we could lose money, we may want to redirect the purpose. So particularly, you'll notice the difference in 6B. We have usually only asked for the amounts of money necessary, or what we received this current year. You'll see a big increase in that for next year. So the total budget that's being presented is $33,879,480, composed of $9,996,424 of state, including state revenue and state sales tax, which makes up 29.51% of our budget. Federal funds of $2,467,682, which makes up 7.28% of our budget. Other revenue, which is fees and charges, of $811,239, makes up 2.39%. And we would be asking the county for $20,604,135, or 60.82% of our budget. This budget does include funds for four buses to be purchased out of the regular operating budget. I will say that I talked to another finance director yesterday, and the lead time of getting buses, of when they're ordered, may exceed the year. So even if they are appropriated next year, chances are we wouldn't be paying for them until the following year. So it would be really hard to put them in an operational budget without the understanding that those balances would be re-appropriated the following year. That's why a capital fund might make the most sense if those funds would be in there, just because of the way our budgeting works, that any unexpended funds revert back to the county on June 30. I thought it was interesting that as our budget, our local percentage is 60.82%, and our composite index is 66.52%. Yeah. And the composite index is made up of 50% of the true value of real estate and Virginia adjusted gross income and taxable sales. It's weighted, so the true value of real estate is 50% of the formula. Adjusted gross income is 40% of the formula, and taxable sales is 10%. So that's our budget in a nutshell. If you have any questions, I would refer you to the budget summary sheet. I think Tammy's got that to put up. Let me see. Yeah. Mm-hmm. So overall, we would have increases in revenue, not counting the county's contribution, of $145,958. State revenue, primarily sales tax, and that's an iffy number, given the economy and the potential impacts that tariffs and job cuts could have. Sales tax is one of those numbers that it's not guaranteed to you. It's their estimate that they do based on their models. But if we enter into a recession, sales tax may not be as rosy as what they've projected. Increase in federal revenue, we did have a decrease there, but with adding the Title VI carryover funds into the budget, it brings it into a positive. And the reason we had a decrease before is because we had purchased switches for our network infrastructure out of last year's budget, which were paid for with federal funds. So just to explain that. And then a decrease of other revenue of $42,095. Revenue is only part of the picture. The rest of it is salary enhancements. And again, we did differentiated salary increases for staff. We did 3% for bus drivers and support staff inclusive of their steps. So it's basically two and a half and then a half a percent step. Teachers, we looked at the whole entirety of the scale and targeted those at years 15 through 30, the highest. And then for administrators, it averaged out to a 2.61%, I believe. Fringe benefits, 12% increase in health insurance overall. And then the way the Virginia retirement system now funds the hybrid benefit program, every three years there's an auto escalation where employees are encouraged heavily to increase their participation by a half a percent. When they do that, that incurs an additional cost to the school division because we have to match their half a percent. So that is going to an effect in January of '26. So those numbers are factored into the fringe benefit costs as well. New positions, we had three positions in the budget. We had an assistant principal at the elementary level. We tried going without an assistant principal at one of our schools or having the person float, and for a number of reasons, that's not been successful. So we would like to reintroduce that to our budget. In order to provide an age-appropriate setting for our adaptive special ed students that will be entering middle school, we need to add a program back to the middle school that was taken away and moved to early childhood special ed this year. That will be driven by AIP, so we don't really have a lot of choice in adding that position. And the other one is an elementary position. We're holding our breath for kindergarten registration to see how that's going to turn out for the coming year. That position is budgeted in the budget as an additional position, but unless the numbers increase, that may not be needed. So that's just out there as a worst-case scenario moving forward. Joint operations of $82,287,000, that's prep, but it also includes some funding for K-Tech so that we could give our students more CTE offerings than what we can currently provide at the high school. So we're in discussions with them to see how we can make that work between schedules and transportation and such. Capital outlay, buses, again, that's $600,000 worth of buses in the regular operating budget, but also some funds out of Title VI for a special ed bus. And that is a placeholder in case we need to use those 6B funds quickly, but also would give us some help with our transportation department in transporting special needs students. Purchase services, zero eyes. Again, that's the first year of the contract that we'll be needing to pay for that. It's not the full 97, but it is a majority of that amount of money for security and safety in our buildings. Internet costs of $16,278.92, travel of $28.55, and miscellaneous of $300. But we also had some decreasing expenses, materials and supplies of $224,963.88. And you wonder, where did that money come from? But it's actually our All-In Virginia program has impacted that greatly, that that money was given to us the year before last and was to be used last year, this year, and a little bit next year. So we'll be watching that to see if there's any carryover to go into next year. Communication went down 22, 27, 28, and that's basically our cell phones that are in our elevators. And then the fund transfer to textbook, which is mandated based on the state budget of 2083. So that's our budget in a nutshell. Is any questions that I could give you or answer?
You met new positions. I understand those, the one that had been moved down to the elementary level?
Yes.
Do we still have that position in place?
We do.
Okay.
And it's still needed. That particular population has grown and will probably continue to grow. And I know that we have looked at possibly into the future needing yet another early childhood special ed class.
Some of those aren't options, right? Like, some of those are required at certain number positions, so.
And she said, "We don't really have a choice about it." She means we really don't have a choice about it.
Yeah, no, and I agree we need to have the AP back. That's, that's got to be, we've got to have that. On the buses, so you're saying there's about a year lead time on new school buses?
Yes.
So you're listing it as capital outlay, but it's currently in the operations budget, like we were talking about?
Correct.
So we just would need to have an understanding with the county that we would have to use carryover funds from one fiscal to the next
Yes.
because of lead time on the buses.
Correct.
Okay. All right. And I think as long as we have that understanding, we'll be okay.
If we have a PO, it can be, you know, considered really spent, even though we haven't cut the check yet.
Got to pay on the invoice.
There's still a lot of unites.
There are a lot of unites. I had a meeting with several other finance directors in other divisions, and everyone is taking the stance that they think that the CE program is in danger, but that they will pass those costs on to residents as they were before. But they think the other federal grant programs will be passed on to other agencies to administer, like Health and Human Services for some. And so we'll see if that changes either the administration of the grants or the dollar amounts of the grants.
So the CEP program you referenced in here for food, the program we've been participating, which I know George and I were really an advocate when we came on board of providing meals for all kids. So I read something about a local food program that potentially may, like you said, get sunset. Is that tied into this one, or is that a separate program?
Yeah. So a few years ago, we had a grant from the local food hub that gave us the opportunity to be able to purchase fresh fruits and vegetables from local sources. But it's been a sporadic, not an every year kind of grant. So it depends on funding.
It was like a billion dollars cut from that, but it didn't affect for a year.
So I was trying to do, when you were originally talking about the CE program with the meals, I was trying to do some napkin math based on the number of meals served in February or whatever. And it looks like
Which is much lower.
Oh, yeah. And I figure we probably, school days in February, something like that. Did we have that many? Maybe it's only 12.
I don't have that off the top of my head.
I don't either, that's why.
Out of 20, 28 days.
Well, we know, we're upwards of 16,000 and 17,000.
14, okay. So I suppose.
Yeah, I mean, it's not anything to see 16,000, 17,000 meals supplied.
Yeah, but I wanted to find out what that breaks out to the population, the school population using them. And so on average, we're serving 550 breakfasts a school day out of 1,400 and however many kids.
Hundred.
And then 900 and some. Well, but it's available to everybody. So my question is, and I'm an advocate of it being available to everybody, but should we lose that extra funding, what would the cost be if we picked that up? So you may not have that information now, and that's okay.
I know that the revenue that we received under the old way was about $363,000 different. But again, we were different populations. So again, we'll have a different number of free and reduced kids. And that's not a scientific way of calculating.
Some of the local businesses and organizations donate to the lunch calls early on when I came, when there was
Yeah. So we didn't have an individual that donated funds for students that had debt and that owed the school lunch program because it used to be that they carried debt from year to year to year till it was paid off. Yeah, but we did have a benefactor that came in and settled all the debts for all the kids. Mm-hmm.
Well, and I'm asking this, one I feel like it's, I mean, I'm a believer that, you know, kids that are sitting in, for whatever the reason is, whether they are hungry because they're needing food and they can't afford it, or whether they're just hungry because they didn't eat breakfast before they left home, kids sitting in a classroom that are hungry aren't paying attention, and they don't learn as well. So I'm an advocate, I'm a believer in all of that. But I'm asking these questions because I think going forward, there's going to be, because of the deficit situation that the country's in, I think we're going to be looking at a lot more onus being placed on the states and then localities. And, you know, so it's probably good for us to be ready for that. But I don't know the answer to, you know, like you said, it's a moving target. So you don't know year to year how many, how many you have, so.
Well, you know, the socioeconomic dynamics of our student population is going one specific direction, and that's more towards free and reduced lunch. They would qualify in that arena.
We hadn't received lunch information for five years since COVID hit, so.
So we're going to have to, we're going to have to issue new guidance on doing that if they go forward with this.
What the benchmarks are.
Right.
Anything else?
We don't, you know, I think we've said here, we didn't do this, and the reality is there's very little in the budget that, you know, it's so people-focused and employee-focused that there's not, not a lot of wiggle and jiggle, as they say.
Nothing new under the sun.
Every business in the country spends about 80% of their budget on people.
Good statement. True. Doesn't help us, though.
No.
Thank you, Shannon.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. You guys ready?
I'd say not every business has 80%.
Well, not
I don't hear what you're saying, but I don't.
There's some, the majority are.
It depends on the type of businesses.
Some said it was northern Virginia, what do you eat?
I guess where the pay is higher, the pay rates are higher, where they're at in the administration or something.
Thank you, Shannon.
All right. You guys ready? All right. So items for action, we need to have a motion to approve the participation in the Region 5 cohort of the VCU RRTC.
I move that we approve
Participation in the Region 5 cohort of the VCU RRTC, Virginia Commonwealth University Rehabilitation Research and Training Center.
You have a motion and a second. Anybody want to talk about that at all? Y'all good?
Sounds like a bargain.
All right. I think so, too.
Thirty-seven hundred fifty dollars.
Let's say yes before it goes away.
Right. All in favor?
Aye.
No opposed or abstaining, so that's cool. The next one is the approval of the 25-26 annual special education plan. Can I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion that we approve the special education plan.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. No, no, or whatever the other middle thing is. And now we need a motion to approve the 25-26 division calendar.
I move that we approve the 25-26 division calendar.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No nays or anything else. Now we go to, we need to approve the superintendent's proposed budget for 25-26.
And before we do that, do we need to put a dollar amount in that motion?
All right. You got the number?
Yeah. Don't.
It's this one. It's really hard to see.
$33,879,480.
Right. Thirty-three.
Thirty-three, eight, seven, nine, four, zero.
All right. I'll do it. All right. I move that we approve the superintendent's proposed budget for 2025, 2026 school year in the amount of $33,879,480.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. We did it. One more time.
For some.
For some. For those of us who are waiting.
I agree.
All right. Do we need to go into closed session?
Do we, what do we need to go into closed session for?
Um, no.
Can I have a motion to go into closed session, please?
I move that the board go into closed session to discuss and consider the personnel report and other confidential personnel matters as authorized by Virginia Code 2.2-3711A1 for purposes of discussion or consideration of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, discipline, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We're in closed session. Aye. We're in closed session.